I'd like to call the City Council February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five meeting to order. Roll call, please. Hang on. Daniel.
Here.
Misty.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. I would like to seek approval for the approval of the agenda, and I believe we had an issue that needs to be corrected.
I'll make a motion to approve with the striking of the first two notes on the agenda, the reappointing oaths in the state of the city mayor, that was last month.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Okay, approval of January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five City Council minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please. Amber.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
We'll go to the financial report, Ms. Arda Money.
Okay, this is for January two thousand and twenty five. The city general income was four hundred eighty-two thousand, two seventy-six, sixty-six. Expenses was four hundred eight thousand, four thirty, thirty-seven, that left a positive operating income of seventy-three thousand, eight forty-six, twenty-nine. And some of those expenditures were for legal fees, contracts, and insurance for the water sewer, water and sewer. Income was four hundred fifteen thousand, one ninety-seven oh six. Expenses was five hundred twenty-four thousand, twenty-three thousand, eighty dollars, ninety-eight cents, that left a negative operating income of a hundred and seven thousand, eight eighty-three, ninety-two. And a big expense on that was the last payment for the water line. And for the streets, income was ninety-four thousand, six thirty-two oh four. Expenses was four hundred fifty-four thousand, six sixteen, sixty. That left a negative operating income of three hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine eighty-four, fifty-six. And that was, big chunk was street improvements.
Thank you. We also have a two thousand and twenty-four FOIA report and the two thousand and twenty-five FOIA report that was requested, and it's in your packets. We'll move on to the department reports. Museum?
So I'm Julie Sallings, Museum Assistant, standing in for Emily Pianalto-Bashirz tonight, and give you an update on some happenings and kind of status of the museum. So the first thing is we have an exciting new display at the museum. We had an interactive table and also a discovery box, and that has been a project in the making for a while. Brittany Berry's East class has been working on that. It has, it has fake food that they've made either in art or using three D printing, and a tablet loaded with videos that were produced by the students. So people can tap on a different food, on various foods, and it will tell its history. In Tony Town, some of them are like oral histories, memories of older residents, or just like educational materials that the students have put together. Some are narrated by students as well. So that's, that's an exciting new thing that we feel like will be really good for like young visitors. It's in the immigration room right now, so I've already seen it in action where kids come in and they're tapping on the table and like learning that way, while parents are able to look around and read the stories on the walls and see photos. So that's been really cool. We'd love any council members to visit and see it, yes.
How long will that be available?
That's a, that's a permanent fixture there.
Okay.
And I, and I.
We were contacted by Rawlins today, and they're, and we're gonna have a field trip, so I know that the little.
Oh, yeah.
Love that.
Yes, yes. And then the discovery box, Brittany may attest to this, is that some, is that something we're like checking out? I can't remember. Yeah, the discovery box is something kind of similar, but that classes could check out from the museum to take onsite. So that will, that will increase the museum's reach as well. On the digitization project, Catalogue is the online software that we're using to catalog all of the artifacts, photos, and everything. We continue to, I've, I've been doing kind of an audit of that, seeing what we've got in there, what we still need to put in. Some features that we've discovered is that it has a built-in AI thing that can describe photos. So some photos that maybe we don't already have a description logged somewhere, we can click a button and it will describe, and then we can refine that. So things that are very tedious for a person to do, like, you know, there's a bear tree in the background, and seven people stand, blah, 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 like all of that can just do it, and then we can edit that for accuracy and to portray what we want to. I have also recently discovered that we can batch upload from spreadsheets, like all the metadata about photos that we have. So I'll be utilizing that as well, and then like refining as we go along. So that digitization project is moving along. We had a hundred and twelve visitors in January. Eighty-one of those were field trippers from Rawlins. But even without that, and I apologize, I don't have this number right now, but we compared to a year ago, and even without that visit, the visitors are up from January, like, a year back.
It was fifty, fifty percent more.
I think it was.
Visitors than last year.
Yeah, I think it was. So positive there. And we've, we have been seeing, like, our visitors really holding even throughout the winter, holding instead of dropping off as much as we expected. Our social media reach has also been increasing, and even from like the year back, or like we do every quarter. I don't have those numbers, but, but yeah, it's been increasing as well. So good reach going on. On the board, we have been discussing and wanting to have some additional committees made from, from the museum board on Amici membership, which is like the Friends of the Museum newsletter, and on expansion, the board has proposed some of those, in addition to the HR committee that has been in place since last year. And at our next meeting, the board members will figure out who is on what committee there, and that will help in the interaction between like staff and board, and kind of just clarify some of the way that things function that way. New board members, so the, the museum board has approved membership of, and they're all four here tonight, kind of let you, let me know if you want them to say anything or whatever, but maybe if all the proposed board members could stand right now, as I, maybe as I say your name. So Brittany Berry, and she's, she's that east facilitator that's been helping so much with projects. Kevin Maestri, who's a local realtor, Chris Taldo, he's over at The Winery now, and kind of a local name, and Billy Morgan, who you might know from Farmer's Market. So we'll ask the City Council to approve these nominations at whatever point in the meeting. Also, Ashlyn Bowen has elected to renew her junior board membership for another year, and hopes to continue as a full board member when she turns eighteen this year, so later on in the year. Okay, so the regular museum hours are Wednesdays and Thursdays, nine, nine AM to one PM, Fridays and Saturdays, one to four. And we also plan on, I don't know when this starts yet, but when Farmer's Market starts, we also plan on having extended hours to catch some of those visitors, so to open earlier in the day on those Saturdays. And then the next meeting of the museum board is scheduled for this coming Monday, March third. So that's what I've got. You're welcome.
Great job, Julie.
Please, Chief Jensen.
The month of January, we responded to six hundred and thirty-five calls for service, filed twenty-two accident reports, served sixty-six warrants, thirteen thirteen outstanding, one point six million outstanding warrant amounts, six hundred and seventy-nine training hours for the month, one hundred and seven total citations, four for speed, seventy-one for other traffic, twenty for criminal, twelve for city ordinance and proper driving, three hundred and twelve total warnings, fifty-nine for speed, and two hundred and fifty-three for other traffic violations.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Were there any accidents due to the ice in the, was that what you were gonna ask? How was, how was everything as far as traffic and accidents when the bad weather came down?
Had a few accidents. Nobody that I know of was seriously injured, so.
Yeah.
We always do a great job driving and that stuff.
I was trying to say, all our units went through unscathed. Good job.
Probably doing some donuts in the parking lot, so.
No.
I'm just kidding.
Not us.
Thank you, chief.
It was spring deal if it.
A spring deal, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, chief.
Our chief crew?
So for the month of January, we had forty-eight total calls, twenty-four EMS, three fire, four MVAs, eleven false alarms, and one service call, and five canceled en route. We increased our three calls to date over two thousand and twenty-four, and average response time's a minute twenty-two seconds. Average on scene time is four minutes and ten seconds. Questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Chief Cruz. All right, next, Public Works.
Good evening. Water storage tank notice to proceed is forthcoming, probably will be within the next couple of weeks. We haven't met with them yet to decide the actual start date. Excuse me. The notice to proceed on the four twelve, six twelve sewer extension, we met with them yesterday. We're going to have the notice to proceed next week. We're still in discussion with RDOT regarding the planned elimination of the Barrington lift station and construction of the Brush Creek Gravity Sewer Line as part of the one twelve widening project. So we haven't met with them since last meeting. The Chamber Springs Water System public hearing that was scheduled for February twentieth was canceled due to the weather. That hearing has been rescheduled for March twenty-sixth. I'll remind you of that at the March meeting. The mayor received a letter yesterday from Hartzell Reagan with Reagan, or Gil Reagan and Owen, the legal firm that represents Washington Water Authority. The letter states that it is notification, quote, "that WWA hereby expressly rescinds any resolution and actions that purported to cede or otherwise relinquish, relinquish those exclusive water service territory rights expressly granted to WWA pursuant to nineteen twenty-six B, the nineteen ninety-seven boundary agreement, and the settlement agreement." Leather, the letter further states, "Please allow this letter to additionally serve as notice that WWA is prepared to initiate litigation in order to preserve its water service territory rights as set forth within the governing authority." All that to say, they're probably gonna sue us. They're still contesting that the, the session of the service territory west of town, is it session or seeding? Anyway, the giving to us of the water service area west of town by Washington Water was not done legally, and that they don't recognize that as our service area. We contend, I contend anyway, that it was done legally. We followed all the steps required by Washington Water Authority at the time, and Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, which held the public hearing, and furnished us with the final letter stating that this meets the, the state water code, and is thereby recorded as such. So we'll see what happens. We're going to be visiting with Justin later this week to see what our next step is going to be from here. But I would say we'll probably get some kind of notice, other notice from Washington Water in the near future. Any questions?
Just one. When did we receive that letter?
Which one?
The Gil Reagan and Owen?
Oh, that one you received yesterday from Hartzell Reagan. It was actually dated February nineteenth, and addressed the public hearing that was supposed to be held on the twentieth, where for the Chamber Springs system, they have to do that in order to give everyone the opportunity to speak for or against that, that water system.
So in the past, it sounded like we were coming to kind of a, a, a settlement, whereas we would take over this area, and something has gone awry somewhere. I mean, I don't know, you may not be able to speak on it, but I thought we were.
You talking about Chamber Springs system or the whole area?
Area that we were gonna take.
Right.
That, you know, that WWA ceded to us, and I'm in agreement with you that I thought that was done by the book, but, you know, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm sure Mr. I can address that better than I can. But can you elaborate any on why the kind of, it seems like a backsliding stance from the Washington Water, like, okay, well, if you guys aren't gonna play by what we think is right, we're just gonna sue you. It seems like we've, we've.
Yeah, and Justin may be able to speak on this a little bit. I mean, the letter indicated that there would be a mediation. Is that correct?
Yeah, the letter requested a mediation. And, I mean, you are correct, Mike, this happened quite some time ago. And so, you know, we certainly have issue with, with what's stated in the letter, and, and with the process, and I think. We certainly, um, have issue with, with what's stated in the letter and, and with the process and I think. You know, the, um, uh, we, we followed that process to the end to when the state of Arkansas issued. You know, the map change and, and we're some time after the fact and we've gone down, we've gone down the road quite a bit, so.
You don't think there's validity to this? You don't think that it would go in their favor?
Um, we, we've been expecting this letter. This is not something that, uh, has been, has been, uh, not expected. We believed every step of the way that the process, I mean, Washington Water came to us and said, will you take this territory? And we said, yes, and we voted the proper approvals. They voted the proper approvals. It went all the way up to the state and got finalized. So it's, it's a strange position to be in to start to unravel that years later. Uh, when, when, when they came to us and initiated the process and so, um, so yeah, I do take issue with, uh, um, uh, with the letter and with the, uh, uh, opinions that are, that are in there and, um, but you know, we'll we'll, we'll see what the, we'll see what transpires.
But no, no suit's been filed as of today.
That's correct.
And they're requesting mediation before filing of a suit.
That could happen.
And I know those are non-binding.
Right, right.
You, you can reach agreements at mediations too, that can become binding, right?
That, that is correct, so, yeah. In any agreement that would come out of mediation or whatever, would have to come forward to us, to the council here to, for, for final approval, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. I.
I might also mention, there were a couple of items in the letter, specific items that they said that we did not do or that Washington Water did not do. One of them was get the approval of the R D A rural development. Um, I spoke with Mr. Wagner, who was at Washington Water at the time. He sent me a copy of the approval from R D A, um, so they missed that one. Um, also, they said in the letter that it wasn't approved by the Washington Water Authority Board, and it was, so. You know, the, the only thing they've got to stand on, and, and it's, to me, they can't stand on it, is the U S D A approval. Uh, when I spoke to Mr. Wagner, he said he did speak to U S D A. He didn't have anything in writing from them. But I have said it before, I'll say it again, they, Washington Water Authority has no infrastructure in that area. And to claim that, claim that U S D A protection doesn't seem possible to me because they're not selling anything, they're not making any money off of that service area to repay their U S D A loan. And I, I, I think I told you a, a couple of months ago that I'd been in contact with U S D A and they finally just said they're not gonna take a stance. They said it sounds like a legal matter to us, so. They were no help.
I like our position, but I'm not, you know, stranger things can happen in court.
Right. Well, like Justin said, we, we've been expecting this letter. We knew it was coming, so, uh, you know, I'm ready to attack it, get it behind us, you know, make a decision, uh, so we can get those people out there watering.
Is this something that goes to straight to Circuit Court or is this a, another, uh, agency that handles this? Circuit. Oh, if they could go either way out, okay.
Thank you all.
And next building report. Mr. Latham.
Good evening. We're gonna see a slowdown on residential, I will tell you. Um, we've only got five lots available in our subdivisions, so you're gonna see at least this first probably six months. Um, that you'll not see the volume that we've seen in the past. Um, you know, we've got three subdivisions in various stages right now. We're somewhat concerned, uh, why Baraloshi hasn't, uh, finished their project. It's been sitting there for probably three months waiting for asphalt to get on the road, so we can confirm that, but, um, so residential will be slow and, uh, at least for the next six months and we'll see how things go from there. Uh, on the commercial side, um, if you look at what compared to where we were last year from a month's side, it looks. Um, we've had twelve permits compared to one, uh, in twenty twenty-four, so I do anticipate commercial will continue to hold its own through, uh, this, uh, twen- next twenty twenty-five, uh, period. Any questions?
Just one. Yeah, go ahead. No, you go ahead. I'll let you, I'll let you. Don't make me write papers to you. Uh, I just wanted to ask you, um, you sounded, you know, on the residential side and the slowdown, you sounded like that was a bad thing. Back to the growth rate that we're going, you said a three percent is healthy and we're above that. I mean, does that speak to that growth speed? Have we halted it and slowed it down and?
Hmm, I don't think, I don't think it's been any of our doing, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think that, uh, development is, uh, something, you know, it starts with selling of the property and making sure that you get a cost on the property that you feel it can develop and sell the lots for and so, um. But, uh, you know. Uh, Baraloshi has been one of those ones that, uh, we're still trying to figure out what's going on with that, that project. It should have been last year.
Yeah.
Being able to.
Well, they sold it, you know, TriStar sold it to the new, the.
Yeah, yeah.
There's been some takeover and then I think the council has had a little bit of a play in that. We did freeze, um, the.
Yeah, what I would like to do, and I've, I've gave an outline to Brad, one of the things that we need to do, I think, if you're looking from a growth standpoint is, is that develop what I call a growth management plan. Um, where you can target areas and it kind of helps you expand where your utilities are going and then you open up an area. And so you can kind of hopefully, uh, keep under what we're trying to do with the threshold of uh, percentage of growth in the area, so. Hold on to that. Uh, it's gonna take some time to develop, um, but it's on his plate to, uh, start working on that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about, uh, how, uh, project valuation is determined because we know you say there's five lots available, but we know there's ninety-one units coming at the corner of Clans. There's a hundred fifty-four for Baraloshi. There's another hundred ten right down here on, off of Barrington, so when you calculate that valuation, um, is it when permits are pulled and
Yeah.
they start laying foundations and things like that? Okay.
The value of the home.
So, this could dramatically increase.
That's right.
Rapidly.
We're just, we're in a kind of a low right now. I mean, you know.
Yes, winter. I get it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, appreciate that, Mark.
Yep. Any other questions on the building report? Okay, moving on to the community development, uh, got several things, hopefully I won't bore you, but anyway, um, we didn't have a planning commission meeting tonight. Uh, all we were gonna do was go over some zoning and development codes. Uh, we're in still discussion on that, so we'll, uh, be discussing that at the next, uh, meeting in March. I do want to tell you, I do appreciate you all coming to our little meeting that we had with the, uh, planning commission as well as the council and Tim Coughlin from Northwest Arkansas Regional, just kind of going through some of the processes that is dealing once it comes to whether it comes to the council or the, uh, planning commission regarding that. Hopefully that was helpful for everybody. Um, this week, uh, we're working with Craft and Tell Group. Um, we're kind of outlining, outlining a plan to move forward on the design standards for the Heritage District. I will tell you, I have a meeting this week with, uh, I believe it's four interested uh, people with Tom Joseph on this Heritage District and the possible purchase of some property and starting to develop that, so we'll see how that goes, but, uh, it's, uh, we'll move forward on that. Um, I did want to update you a little bit, um, on the, uh, work that we're being doing regarding the large-scale development with, uh, waste management. It's been almost three years when the large-scale development was approved by this council. Or not by the council, by the planning commission, actually been longer than that. It was in, it almost before years in August that was actually approved. And, um, so we sent a letter out, Brett sent a letter out to Waste Management, basically to tell them that we haven't done any inspections out there. The only inspection that's ever happened out there has been on their gas plant. Um, that was all signed off, all done, squared off. Um, but if you look at the, if you look at the plans, I mean, there's a lot of things that was supposed to be done. One of the concerns I have basically is that they were supposed to create a road in there that was to support the, uh, fire trucks to go out there. Um, we have no verification if that road was ever complete. We don't even know if it was inspected. We, you know, there's just it's just a mess, to be honest with you. It's a total mess. So, once the letter went out, we received, uh, a letter basically stating that they wanted to, uh, appeal our decision and we had a meeting with them on Monday. Kind of went through the process of what they need to do, um, and hopefully um, we'll see some action that needs to happen. If you don't know about large scale, I mean, you know, there's a final, final that we, they call for. We go out, inspect it. Not only our city engineers, Akro comes out. Brad goes out, checks the landscaping, um, then we check, uh, James is out there if there's any utilities that have been done. And then there's a whole gamut of things that need to be done and that was never, ever, ever done. So, um, the other thing that I want you to be aware of is there was an M O U. It's talked about in the, uh, large scale. Um, the M O U was never approved by this council. I don't know if you guys know that, but it was signed by the acting city mayor at that time on twelve twenty-eight, twenty-one. I personally think that it was some you know, something that wanted to look back at the community and say, hey, by the way, we're gonna give you all this money over a twelve-year period of time. And then we're going to give you forty-five thousand dollars for that traffic light, which actually cost a million dollars. In my understanding, the reason that that traffic light was even being considered one time was because of waste management. Um, I haven't talked to Justin, I did talk to the mayor, but I, I really don't think the city ought to even inquire about moving forward on the M O U. Um, it's my it's my direction or at least recommendation to this council that we remove the truck traffic off of Clink. And let them find their own way out of there. Um, that's becoming a major residential area. And we don't need semi-trucks and trucks rolling there fifty mile an hour down when people are walking on sidewalks. So, this might have been a ploy to say, okay, we're, we're here, we're gonna stay here, we're gonna gift you this money to try to take care of Clink Road and Dow and Kelly. But four hundred thousand dollars over twelve years is not gonna put a dent in those roads. I'll just tell you what it costs overlay roads today. So, I want you to be aware of that and where we're at on that. Um, we will get back with waste management. They sent their plans in. We'll be reviewing them again. Set up a meeting of a pre-con, try to figure out what they've done. To be honest with you, they should have never been permitted through the state without that L S D approval. I'm just telling you. That's what that L S D was for, is for those permits, those two permits, class one and class four. Just FYI for you. Moving on. Uh, on the streets and stormwater, um, we're meeting Friday with, uh, Burns and McDonald. And, uh, they've got the, kind of the outline of the, uh, plans for Barrington and four twelve. And so we're discussing the utility relocations that's necessary for that project as well as the, uh, right-of-way needed. Um, and so, uh, you'll see next month on the Cal. We'll be asking for a resolution to support moving forward on that grant for our next step for the utility relocation and for the right-of-way. Fletcher, uh, thirty percent plans are complete. You see a contract with, uh, C K uh, on here to move forward to the final plans. We did meet with, uh, one of the property owners, the main property owner uh, about selling, uh, his property for the right-of-way that would be on the east side there along Clink. Looks like that'll go, uh, smoothly. Um, our statements qualifications for the community building, uh, we got them in. I got five people to help us go through those. There was four that were submitted, uh, they've been scored. We're gonna try to meet early next week with the committee to pick somebody. And then hopefully put a grant together on that. Or at least a contract that you guys will approve. On Managani, we've, uh, got two out of three easements that we need. Uh, Zach's finishing up the plans, so as soon as we get the final easement, um, then, uh, the gas company will come through and relocate their line and then we'll be ready to go out for bid. And start working on that project. Um, Ms. Brown, are you listening to me? Okay, well, I'm gonna tell you. I have the final design completed for South Penaltale Draining. Yes. We will need one easement, so we're gonna need an easement, not from you. And we are going to actually start some construction down there. According, I, it's on Scott's schedule, okay, but it's gonna be some other contractors down there too, so. I want you to be, no, it's gonna be sometime this summer when it dries out a little bit. Okay? And if you want, if you wanna see what it looks like, okay, come on up. Yep, yep, yep. Okay, on the grants, uh, the raised grant was actually submitted on, uh, January twenty-ninth. That's the one that, uh, has to do with South Barrington. And I mentioned about, we will be submitting a tap grant to, uh, get some push-button pedestrian lights down there at Barrington and, uh, um, Fletcher. Since Fletcher's gonna go through, we're gonna have to protect that. We got people walking across there, so. We'll be doing that along with what we just talked about on the four twelve Barrington. I do want to mention one thing that we've been on and, uh, hopefully, um, Chief Jensen, Jensen and then, uh, Chief Krug are finalizing the emergency management plan. The city has not really had an emergency management plan. So, we have been working a couple of years on this and, um, we don't want to be caught flat-footed if something happens. And so, um, these guys hopefully will finish that up sometime next month and we'll get it to you, so you guys take care of it. Um, very, very important, especially as our growth continues, that we have an emergency management plan in place. So, anybody have any questions? Yes, Mike.
Uh, when you talked about, uh, uh, the Fletcher and Barrington, I assume you're talking about crosswalk type deals like on the riding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They'll be push-button, they flash up and hopefully people will stop, they're supposed to stop, but they'll, they'll be marked crossings on there and everything else, so, yeah. Tim, did you have something?
I did, yes.
I did, yes. Uh, back in, uh, the summer of 21, I remember being told about the memorandum of understanding as though it were some wonderful thing. Uh, I, I didn't think it amounted to much at the time. Uh, but after that mayor resigned and then the new mayor came in, I know that, that that was signed off on. But we never heard about that, those of us that are here. Um, I, I know that others here can attest. I, I don't know if there was chicanery about that or not. But with that and the large scale development, which I do believe there was some chicanery, uh, in that one, from your perspective, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I'm curious, why is it that this large scale development from 21 to now, that these things haven't happened? How much of that is on us, things that we dropped the ball on? How much of that is on waste management?
It's really, it's really on the owner and the engineer. And my understanding is they've switched engineers. I don't know all about that.
Do you know who the engineer was originally?
But, but, you know, I think the other thing is, is what I've learned is, is that through this process, the city had three planners. You guys know that?
Yeah.
Three.
I could, I could tell you their names.
So, so, you know, there was no continuity to what was going on. And so, we can't find, in any li- large scale that we do here, they actually come to the table after it's approved. And we sit down and we, we look at the plans, okay? And they might, the next step is to try, try to get a grading permit, okay? And then, once they get a grading permit, they're already submitting their information for water and sewer down to the health department because they got, they get that. Once that review and it's done, then the, um, we come back, we have our final meeting, and then everybody signs off. There's a stamp there. Fire department, Chief Krug signs off, James Clark signs off, Brad signs off, and the city engineer signs off. That never happened. There is no record of that ever happened. And so, you know, you, you think that as you're coming in, yeah, I mean, everything's kosher. But digging back into it and, and, you know, I mean, we're finding things that have been dropped, no question about it. But, you know, all we can do is pick it up and go. Now, the memo, yep, the memo understanding why I say that it's not worth even messing with is because it's all tied to, if you don't appeal us, it's all through that. Every word of it. So, as long as you don't do anything and we can kind of do our own thing, yeah, we'll give you the money. But-
And the money is truly a pittance over 12 years' time.
$45,000 for a million dollar traffic light? That they probably are running 30% of the traffic on that road? Maybe more?
Yeah, that, that MOU, I got, I got to look at it. I was up here yesterday and he gave me a copy and it really just benefited them.
Yeah.
Wonder why the city would have, would have allowed such a thing? In an MOU, I mean-
Well, Justin, Justin told me, he didn't even, he didn't see it till you were on vacation in Hawaii, right? You were in Hawaii and never even-
Correct, yeah, on-
28th?
The 28th?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever.
That's when it was signed.
But, and, and also the version that was signed is a, says it's a draft, that it's not a final, uh, final agreement. So, um, one of the things also to point out on the, kind of the, what's happened, of course, is that, uh, you know, there's, there's litigation over the issuance of the permits from, from ADQ, as we all know. But ADQ lifted the stay, um, uh, issued the permits and lifted the stay on, on those. And, uh, so, I mean, to our, our understanding or our concern is that, uh, at that point, uh, waste started to be trafficked to those areas without the prerequisites of the large scale being performed. So, that's, that's when, you know, we had to hit the button to say, stop, you know, this has gotten off the tracks. And, um, so, at this point right now, the information is being submitted on those requirements, and then that's going to be reviewed and we'll, we'll, we'll see where things are at.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lethem.
Hey, moving on, we'll go to comments from citizens. Do I have any citizen comments?
James Dean, 1025 Trailwood Street. I just want to give a big shout out to our street department for the way they handled the roads during the snow. It was nice to get out on Clint's Clink and be able to drive on a driver, dry road and up Moni, uh, Magani too. So, it was a really good job and I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. First, I want to thank Mark and whoever's responsible for listening to this, nine over here. Glad that's coming through. It's somebody else out there. So, uh, number two, James has already mentioned it, uh, waste, not waste, uh, Washington Water come to us by lead of McEwan Wagner. If you'll note, every time that name comes up, there comes up a problem. That's all I'm going to go, I'm going to leave right there. Um, what else was it? Oh, yesterday, I was driving home. Traffic was tough out here, so I cut down by the old fire station, went over through the subdivision, got along about Penzo Road or Penzo Avenue and obvious odors. So, I drove through the other side, took a picture, got a screenshot of the air, air blowing straight this way. Drive south on Barrington, you get out of it, drive in front of Harbinger Acres, in front of Waste Management, you get back in it. So, that's where our problem comes from. I want to read this too. Also, this is where our problem started. Says, uh, December 10th, 2001, "A proposed expansion to the Waste Management Tonton Landfield moved forward November 30th when Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality interim director, Richard Weiss, approved a certificate of need for expansion." ADQ bypassed, Weiss overturned a July ruling from the four county solid waste board that denied landfill owner and operator Waste Management Incorporated request for a certificate of need for a $10 million, 10 million cubic yard expansion. ADQ, every time. Thursday 6:00 PM, right across the street over here. I know there's not always a lot of people in here, but you can see 50 to 100 views when you go to YouTube. So, I think this is just a, a video for people to come back and complain about later. So, whoever's watching, be there. Seven, uh, 6 o'clock, Thursday afternoon, across the street at the church, ADQ has a public meeting addressing the Title V permit. They do not have a permit for you to review other than the current one. The other one is in draft. How do you look at a permit to approve it if you can't even read it? It don't make sense, does it? All right.
Mr. Lovett, Title V is, what kind of permit?
Title V, it, and now you got me with mine. Yeah, it's, it is the air permit to allow them to operate in their, in this area, period, Title V.
It'll be air.
There's a better explanation. I don't have it right now. So-
I just wanted to make sure that the council knew what it was.
Right. So, Thursday 6:00 PM. I hope a lot of people show up. If you don't, don't bitch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Is there any other citizen comment online? No? Anybody else? All right, moving on. I need approval by the city council members to waive the three reading rule for all ordinances on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to waive-
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Okay, there is, number 10 is no, oh, business. So, we'll move on to new business. Approval of the appointment of Kevin Maestri, Chris Taldo, Brittany Berry, and Billy Morgan to the Tonton Historical Museum. Julie, would you like to come up there and announce them or introduce them again, please?
Sure. I will start with Brittany and mention that she had to leave early for a prior obligation that started tonight due to the reschedule of this meeting. But Brittany Berry, um, has been involved with the museum for years and particularly with her East classes. And, um, we feel that she'll be a real asset in, in, um, helping us move forward with things. Then we have, um, Chris Taldo, who has, um, already come in with ideas and interest to, to our board meetings. Um, we've got Kevin Maestri, who is wanting to serve the community and carry on. His grandfather was board president years ago, and he wants to make similar contributions. Um, Billy Morgan has really jumped in and volunteered. He helped out tremendously at Palenta Smear. And, um, they have all just showed really specific interest and been kind of rearing to go. So, that's what I've got.
I think the last time we did this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that everybody did get up and say a little bit, is so that we could get to know them. Is that okay?
That's absolutely-
Sorry to put you guys on the spot, but if we could just hear a little bit about you from you, that would be wonderful.
He's like, no.
No, I'm saying it's not-
Oh, okay.
We're not, we're, we're not going to do that.
And again, excusing Brittany, but here's Billy Morgan.
Hi folks, I'm Billy Morgan. Uh, I've lived here in Tonton for about seven years. I come from Bentonville. My wife and I moved here. And, uh, we live on Wildcat Creek Boulevard. Uh, we built a home down there. Um, like you guys know, I'm from, I do the, the farmer's market. Last year, it was our first year to do the farmer's market. And, uh, we didn't really know much of the town. All we knew is just the kind of the great festival, you know? Growing up, I came here every year. And, um, just doing the farmer's market last year, we got to meet a lot of the citizens that live here, people who've lived here all their life too, all the people who've just moved here, living in all the new subdivisions. And we just fell in love, not only with the town, but we fell in love with the people. And I just believe that there's two kind of people. There's, there's people who live in the community and there's people who want to be part of the community. And my wife and I, we want to be part of the community. And the best way to do that, I believe, is start at the foundation. And the foundation is, you know, the first families. They, uh, you know, their blood, sweat, and tears of, of getting to where they were. And, um, I just believe that we need to, um, just keep on sharing their stories and their trials and tribulations and, and not let that, that memory and, um, the way we are now, you know, um, fade away. So, that's why I want to join the museum to just keep, to honor them and to keep the tradition alive and, um, serve the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Um, Kevin Maestri, and, uh, I've been in Tonton, Tonton adjacent my whole life. Both my folks are from Tonton. My mom is a Chola, and my dad was Frank Maestri. And, uh, he was one of the first board members that, when they started the museum. And, uh, I, I think similar to my dad, I like to, I like to make sure that we keep preserving Tonton's history. Uh, it's important to my family, and, uh, I know it's important to a lot of other families that live out here. And that generation of his are there, aren't as many of them around anymore. So, I think it's up to the next set of folks to step up and kind of take on that role. So, that's why I wanted to serve on the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hey folks, my name's Chris Taldo. Um, grandfather was former mayor of Tonton. Um, I'm related to the original settlers on the Taldo side, Penalto side, and Marsanis, uh, going way back. Um, everything these guys said about as far as preserving the history and everything, of course, that's, that's very important. So, um, I like history in general. So, to be attached to the, the story that's being told and know a lot of the stories that maybe that haven't been told yet. And just ready to be part of that and, I mean, continue the preservation.
Thank you very much.
Didn't say enough. Um, she, when she came to the board meeting and talked about why she wanted to be on, she, and in her application, she mentioned that as a young girl, her father owned a business and that it was right in the neighborhood of a museum. And so, she would go to work with her dad and she was just always drawn to the museum and the history nearby. So, that's a little personal touch about Brittany since she had to step away.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
With that, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve these board members.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Usain.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
You guys can run away now if you want.
All right, moving on. Approval of an ordinance to approve the Castellini Phase II rezone, Mr. Spurlock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Um, we talked about this, the Cal meeting, uh, regarding the rezone of the Castellini project, uh, to move forward. And I'm here to answer any questions. I do apologize, I do not see the applicant here, but I'll try to answer if you have any questions. I know you guys moved this forward for a vote. So, any questions?
Say that faster.
You want me to?
No, just kidding. You just were on a roll. I just-
You got to understand when I preach, I have to get out by 30 minutes because people fall asleep on me.
I, I've never fallen asleep when we talk. No. Uh, I, I would like, uh, to make a motion to approve.
A second.
Roll call.
Mayor.
Daniel?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did my, did not mean to interrupt you. Remind about the reading of, yeah, I got to read the title.
Apologize. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'll, I'll do that first. Uh, uh, City Tonton, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance to rezone approximately 0.77 acres of real property located at 992 East Henry de Tonte Boulevard, parcel numbers 830-37575-000 and 830-37578-000, from general commercial C2 to commercial trades and services CT in the city of Tonton, Arkansas.
Hey, we've had a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Daniel?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hey, moving on. Approval of an ordinance to amend section 51.04 water rate increase,
Did you say water rates, right?
I did.
Okay. I thought so. So, uh, here we are again. Uh, this was, uh, uh, tabled at the last meeting. Um, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, the, uh, base rate. Um, I, I, I want to remind you, Mike asked me about this, I'm sorry, Mr. Waszkowiek asked me about this before the meeting. Um, the ordinance that you have in the packet is still the same. If, if we get to the point where, uh, we decide not to move forward with the, uh, the base rate increase, then, uh, I would like for you to consider to pass with just the, uh, water rate increase without the base rates. But, uh, I do have Ari again from Waterworth. Uh, he's going to give us a short little presentation, uh, talk about the, the, the base rate increase and possibly what, how that would affect our future financials. So, if you would, give him just a few minutes.
Uh, can I interject just a little bit real quick? What we passed to here was the rate increase without the base increase.
Right. Like I'm saying, we didn't change the ordinance. So, if you want to pass it tonight, just pass it without the base rate increase and we'll, and we can change that, correct?
Yes. It can be done by amendment.
That, that's fine. I just find it a little odd that that's not what we voted to come here. And so, we've got something in front of us that we did not vote to bring here. And so, now there's this thing, we said we didn't want to bring here, that is here, and we have to strip it out. So, I understand that, that, what you want there, but that is not the appropriate way to handle that. Um, and, and I, I take objection. I don't often, but, but I do.
Well, what, what I want is the base rate and the water rate increase, but-
We, we know. We talked a lot about it at the last meeting. And, and we, as a council, unanimously voted to send it without that base rate. Uh, if you guys feel differently, that's fine. But again, we talked a lot about that, uh, two weeks ago before we came to that conclusion.
I believe it was a total misunderstanding because we turned it into the, um, Jamie sent it into the attorney, and I think it was just an oversight. It had nothing to do with Mr. Clark. It had something to do with internal.
Uh, well, e- either way-
Understood.
Something untoward has happened. I don't mean to blame Mr. Clark, but something untoward has happened and, and that's- Something untoward has happened. I don't mean to blame Mr. Clark, but something untoward has happened and and that's not appropriate.
All right, if you would, please allow Ari with Waterworth to give you just a few, a short presentation.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Turn him up a little bit, please.
Yeah. Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Better hear you.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much, sir. And hi, everyone. My name is Ari. It's my second time here. Thank you so much for inviting me here today. I know that James requested just to have a short presentation to go over the base rate as well, the additional base rate over the 10. So what I'm going to do here before I start sharing my screen is just go over the baseline that we saw in the prior meeting. And then talk about the ordinance that we already have in place, which is a 10% across the board, and then also the base rate after that. That will be the format we're following. And just for everyone that hasn't, wasn't able to attend last meeting, to provide some context, Waterworth is a software platform that empowers local governments like Tawny Town's local governments towards achieving financial sustainability with balancing affordability and international equity. And that's where we've been working with Mr. Clark and Mr. Lambert for the last few months as well. With that, I'm just going to begin. If there's any other question or introduction, please let me know, and I'm just going to proceed with our presentation for today. Awesome.
Do we have a stack here, Brad?
Can everyone see my screen?
Hang on just one second, please.
No worries.
There we go.
I'm going to stop sharing for just a minute and redo this, okay?
No worries.
Okay, go ahead. Redo it.
Okay, perfect.
There we go.
Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
That's great. All right, so last time we had gone through these models, but I'm just going to break it down slowly for us. So right now, in front of us, we have the dashboard for Tawny Town's water service area. And the way we proceed is that we have collected all the actuals for the following data that we have received and also the budget for 2025. So how this dashboard right now, all you see is pretty colors. We're going to start breaking it down step by step. And the model starts from 2021, and then the Y axis, you just see the dollar amounts. So we'll begin with our operating expenses. You can see that from 2021, there are some increases, decreases over the years. In fact, you see a 17% increase from 24 to 25, and eventually a drop off. And then we have a 3% standard just to forecast for the future in terms of our operating expenses that take place, which is why you see a steady growth over the years in our model right there. Then we have so many contracted services that also take place that are getting stacked on top of each other that tell you a similar story. Then we have any current debt service that's existing right now, any proposed debt service for the future projects, especially, I think, believe a water tower is coming up later on in the years. Then we have a proposed debt for the debt service payments. And finally, we also have our capital improvements. Now you see the two towers right there, and then the mountainous background that comes into place right there for us. And with that, that makes up all of our revenue requirements. And now I'm just going to start layering in our revenues. Who we are skyscrapers. For example, we have our sale of water service, this little golden box right there. And then you have impact fees that we made sure that we have at 50% capacity right now. And then you have other operating revenue, delta contributions, if any, non operating revenue that's been paying for some of the other big projects. And then also we have the borrowed funds for a project later down the line. Now, this whole model, when you talk about the sale of water service, is assuming that impact fees remain at 50% and also increasing our rates by 3% only, moving from 2025 onwards. With those assumptions, the way we can understand our cash position is that if you ever see these mountains taller than us skyscrapers, that's when you're starting to see cash falling lower. And the vice versa, when you see in 2023, when you have taller skyscrapers in the buildings or the mountains in the foreground, that's when you start to see your cash position rise. So when I layer this on, you can see that climb. And eventually, when you start seeing funding gaps from 26 onwards, that's when you start to see a decline in our cash position. And to understand our cash position even better, we have, we can isolate the cash position and then layer in some guidelines in place. The first guideline that we have is our operating threshold. Now, this is very important because we want to understand how much money we want to keep aside for any unexpected operating expenses. In this case, it will be 50% of our, let's say, six months of operating expenses, as well as 100% debt coverage for that particular year. So we want to make sure that we have enough in our reserves to pay for all of our debt and also 50% or six months of our operating expenses. And you can see by 2030, especially after 2025 peak, we're going below that threshold, which means we're almost in the danger zone of using all the emergency reserves to pay for our daily expenses and capital projects. One step forward from this is our cash position target right there. Now, this is about $800,000 that Mark and James had mentioned, just to keep a buffer for capital projects. Let's say the unexpected capital projects that might occur, which is why we want to keep a small buffer in there. And so the aim is essentially to stay above the red dotted line, the operating threshold, and somewhere close to the black dotted line. Because that's where our producing target is as of right now. And with that, you can see that with this current baseline, we're seeing ourselves head towards the negative where we're going below by 2030 with a 3% increase, and then below 20, the below zero by 2032. And that was before we started passing and discussing the ordinance for talking about 10% increases. And with that, are there any questions in regards to the dashboard and how it works as of right now before heading to the scenarios and talking about rate increases for 2025?
Not for me.
Perfect. So with that, let's head into the scenario where we were talking about readjustments and also include without any additional base increase. So if I just isolate them, and you can see that our revenues now are climbing at a faster rate. If we have our cash position in there and we have an operating threshold mentioned right here, then we have a cash pension target, you can clearly see that we're able to sustain ourselves for a longer period of time. But eventually, by 2032, we're getting close to our operating threshold. Now, we're not going to zero, but we're somewhere in the range, maybe a few, maybe a five to 10 years down the line, we'll see ourselves getting close and below our reserve targets. And the rate increases for that over the years is having, again, we have accounted for growth, which is about 4%, higher than the 3% that you mentioned and so on, just being more conservative with it. We also have the 10% for 2025. And some of the scenarios that we explored was what if we did 10% throughout the years, and we had 10% for a few more years? Again, these are just scenarios that he played out, but if he had 10% for a few more years and then a 5%, what would the action be? And that's how the cash would look. You can clearly see that we're able to maintain a strong cash balance over the next five to seven years, and then by 2032, we'll start to go below and we'll be below around below our operating threshold marker. Okay. I will get back to this, and we'll have time for question, further questions to the scenarios. The other scenario is one that James wanted to make for me as well. And that is in regards to, I'm the same outlook, but for 2025, we're going to be increasing and adding a bit for revenue when it comes to our base charges. So I've added that into 2025, and you can clearly see just adding that early on into 2025, although we have additional services that our customers have to pay, it's able to keep us afloat for a much longer period of time and actually stay close to our target and not have the threat of going below our operating thresholds by 2032. While maintaining the same plan for the future. The the best way to see this is also by just using a compare feature right here, where you compare your two scenarios. Scenario B is what we have in the ordinance, and then also the scenario A, which is with our $3 base rate increase. So just isolate the thresholds. That's the difference of the graph. Again, the the one on the right is with the additional base, and the one on the left is the 10% across the board. And then we have the numbers that also right below it. I would like to give you some time for any questions, in this case, or James and Mark can also add on.
I just, I guess I have a just a statement. They mentioned the $3 base charge just to give us more of a of a larger revenue buffer, but that's not really what it would be because we want to use it to upgrade the equipment.
True.
So it's not going to give them
Yeah, we will be using some of it as we build up some some capital. I appreciate your indulgence. I know we've already discussed this. Just wanted you to see some some numbers and and the charts, you know, to be able to visualize that better. If you don't have any other questions for Ari, we'll let him let him go, and we'll let you all deliberate on the on the rate increase.
Thank you, Mr. Charla.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ari.
Yes, sir. I'll talk to you soon. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I believe that more than anybody else here, that I've been the one hammering the drum that we need to earn enough money to keep things up and running. And you may recall over the last couple of months on this particular issue, I was the first one to run out and say, yes, we need to raise these rates. I I am not necessarily opposed to raising rates. I believe Mrs. Ibarra had fantastic concerns that she brought up regarding base rates. And after the last discussion that we had without understanding entirely where all the money is going and why, but we were hoping to maybe get this system that would add slowly these these readers that that would help read water over over the years. The more that I've looked into those particular readers, I am really, really frightened for the citizens of this of this town. We've got issues with waste management. And if you look into these EMFs and how these meters are read, we're putting electromagnetics all over town. We cannot avoid them. And our our bodies are being bombarded by them. I have tons and tons and tons of articles I'd be happy to show you from across the country, from across the world about the dangers of this. If we are still going to step into that concept, then the people of this town need to do something to protect themselves from the electromagnetic fields that are going to be bouncing all over the place. And we must, I believe, as a matter of public health, give people the opportunity to opt out of it, which seems to be the case in everywhere. I don't think we can force somebody to do it. But as people start opting out of this, it makes the system less helpful anyway. So if we're doing a base rate in order to get an EMF system, and that's the purpose behind the base rate, I am not okay with that. If we're doing a base rate because we've got to find a way to keep the doors open because we're selling donuts that cost us $1.50 and we're only charging a buck for them, yes, I'm okay with that. But the last time that we talked, I don't feel that there was a really clear answer under what we were doing with that base rate. So if it's about this EMF thing, I am 100% opposed. If it's something else, you guys can can talk amongst yourselves and and perhaps you can convince me otherwise. But as for now, I I like where we landed at the last meeting, bringing it here without the base rate increase.
So can we get a response to that? Is it for the meters or is it, what's what's it going to?
Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Well, you're the mayor, so yes, we will allow it.
Okay, thank you. Our current system is severely outdated. Last month, over 200 meters were misread. It was, we had to have people going back out, sometimes up to four times, looking at the misread readers. That is a lot of manpower used. With the rapid growth of our community, I would like the water department to have a system in place to support the growth instead of us being behind the black ball like we are now. And in the future, be in a position where we're upfront and not in a position to play catch up. I think it's very important that this system, which also detects water leaks, it has a complete grid on it, and it will give you where the water leaks are, what areas they are in. It does multi, multi things, not just one thing. This will help with water loss tremendously. It will help with our manpower. They will be able to locate them quicker and and more effectively than what we're doing now. I I support this system, and I really want to do what what we can to move forward instead of going backwards or playing catch up later on.
Well, I don't disagree, but if we're going into a system, I'm not saying that we don't need a new system, maybe we do. But if if we had 200 misread meters, if that if that was literally an hour times 200 meters, that's five days. But of course, it doesn't take an hour per meter. We're driving by some, and no matter what system we use, we're still going to have some misread readers. But if we're going into something like EMFs, to answer that question, again, we already have a huge issue with waste management that this city helped cause. And it's getting worse and worse and worse. We've got odor issues. We've got all manner of who knows what other issues inside the cars formations that we have. But this is a health concern. So if the answer to our crumbling infrastructure is to do something that's slowly killing our citizens, we cannot do it. We don't fully understand it.
May I make a point of order, please?
We certainly will over time.
I would like to redirect us back to, if we want to have a discussion about ML, I'm all for this discussion, but not on this topic right now. I want to redirect us back to what we're
That's fine.
supposed to be doing. I'm I'm glad to have that too. But I need to do a little bit more research on it, but can we just make a motion to vote on this without the base rate increase as it was passed at the Cal to come to us with only the usage increase. So the Exhibit A that we will see that's attached to the ordinance, and I don't know how the ordinance is going to have to be rewritten. But the rates on the 5/8 residential, instead of $20, should read 17. Instead of 2180, it will be 1880. Outside the city, instead of 2744, it's going to be 2444. And the same underneath the 5/8. All the other numbers underneath that stay the same. The 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 inside city rates will be reflected or reflected correctly on the Exhibit A that we have with this, and we'll leave those as is. But I think we should vote on on that, and then we can save this other discussion for these meters because it's when there are other issues besides just the frequencies.
Are you making
You made the motion?
Yes.
Amber seconded. Roll call, please.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
We're going to need to get those numbers right before we go.
Sorry, sorry about that. City Tine Town, Washington County, Arkansas, ordinance to amend Section 51.04 water service rates of the Tine Town Municipal Code declaring an emergency for other purposes.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please. Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Uh, yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel? We have an emergency clause. Emergency clause? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second the clause.
Roll call? Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, approval of amending the 2024 budget.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Amber?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Approval of a resolution to set and affirm appointments to the Tine Town Planning Commission? So
Weird.
Well, first, we need to hear from each of the candidates, please. Just one moment. All right. Mr. Porch, would you like to come and speak, please? All right.
My first one. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Porch. Good evening, respected members of the City Council, fellow citizens. I stand before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to speak. As a candidate for the reappointment to the Planning Commission, over the past seven years, I have had the opportunity and privilege of serving the community. And am eager to continue working alongside my fellow commissioners to plan the future that benefits us all. It's going to be short. Thank you for this opportunity consideration. I am excited to prospect for the continuing to serve on the Planning Commission. And I humbly ask you to support for your support and allowing me to help guide our community towards a bright and prosperous future. At this time, I will take questions if you have any, or if you just want me to go sit down, I will. Thank you.
Andy Black?
A hard act to follow. I didn't have anything prepared. I just have a little cheat sheet. But I just come before you to ask for a reappointment to another term of the Planning Commission. And, um, I have learned a lot in the last, what, two and a half years since I've been on. I, I think our commission, commissioners that we have now are, work well together. We, we constantly talk to each other during the meetings. And, um, we're, I think we all get along pretty good and, and tell each other what we do or don't like. I really enjoy learning. It, it, there is a lot to learn. And I do, when Brad, since it's our packets, I do try to study them well and, and ask him questions ahead of time and try to learn. And I'm constantly learning. And, uh, but I really do enjoy it. And I do always have the best of the city in mind. I really want to have, have a really nice city that, that we can all be proud of. I thank y'all for your consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Chris Trout?
Well, that is, uh, hard to follow. Um, Kevin and I actually worked together at JB Hunt for several years and reported the same VP. So, uh, he knows a little bit about me. I, um, live at 1278 Kelly Avenue. And I bought the property in '02. It's three acres. Um, South Point, um, is right behind me. And I've, Mark, I've visited with Mark and Zach about, for me, let me, let me backtrack. So early 2000s, I was approached, if there was any interest for me to be on the, on the Planning Commission. And at the time, it just wasn't right because of work. I was married at the time, kind of going through some, um, um, challenging times then. And so I focused on work over the next several years. And by not getting involved when South Point was underdesigned and, uh, the engineers presented to Planning Commission and to you guys, uh, it affected my property immensely. So I've shared, um, I know that Mark said up on the screen that, um, the approval for South Penalto is going to start off. And, um, so I guess what I'm saying is I have the time now. I spent 25 years at JB Hunt. I'm, um, was playing pickleball in the park just earlier today. And I have three grandchildren. And my, um, my past or history with Tine Town is I grew up on Robinson Road back in the late 60s and 70s when I was a kid. And mom took us here at church, uh, St. Joseph. And so I grew up there. Uh, I was married to a Sabatini. And where the John Deere dealership is, is where her parents lived. And that was Delmo and Rosely Sabatini. And so my son was baptized at St. Joseph. So I have a lot of, and like where the bridal is now. I remember when that used to be a mercantile and you'd go in there. And I was just a kid, I'd get guns and stuff like that. But, uh, so I've been a part of Tine Town since 67. And I, I have the time. And so, you know, I think they're doing a great job. I'm sure I think they're all, um, blend well together. So I'm just presenting myself out there. If the opportunity isn't for me at this moment, consider me next year because I'll still be around, God willing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trout.
Thank you. We also have a Todd Reynolds. And I was told today that he was out of town and would not be able to attend tonight. So with that, uh, we will go ahead and adjourn. And we will be back as quickly as we can. Uh, council, we will meet in the back, uh, water department area.
Well, resume our meeting. Call it back to order. Okay, on approval of a resolution to set an affirmative appointments to the Tawny Town Planning Commission, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue with the two that we currently have as commissioners.
I will second.
Roll call please.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Trout, thank you for coming and, um, I appreciate it.
What you said.
Thank you very much.
I'm just throwing my name out there, so if somebody doesn't want to do it next year, just.
Remember what you said about coming back next year.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Mr. Bortz, Ms. Black, Mrs. Black, congratulations.
Uh, yes, our attorney had to step out and go to a different meeting, so he is not with us, uh, for the remainder of the meeting.
All right, approval of a resolution to work order one A, Mr. Latham.
Said CK Engineering, AK, Zach is doing a fabulous job on Fletcher for the 30% plans. We ask him to move forward on completing those plans, so this is the contract that, uh, we're being presented to you all.
Okay, this is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute task order numbers one A with CK Civil Engineering LLC for the Fletcher Road Improvements Project, South Barrington Road to Clink and Clink Road in the city of Tawny Town, Arkansas.
Go ahead, Mr. Montez.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, hang, how, before that, there's, this says one A and one B in the resolution, but we're only voting on one A, right?
One A, yes.
So we need to scratch, uh, if you make your motion, then we scratch one B.
With the amendment that we scratch one B and only approve one A.
In the resolution and then throughout the document.
Yes, sir. Uh, I don't see, I don't see that, but if you.
You don't see it anywhere.
Did we get a new one?
I mean, mine was in my packet.
Well, I got, I picked up my packet last week, so maybe, uh.
It's in our bug, just shows one A.
Yes, I mean, the red is one A on the third page and all of this stuff.
Seeing something different?
I know, I'm looking at it.
Speaking words into existence that aren't there.
It's in front of you on the screen, Mike.
He, he drove all the way from Little Rock to get here today.
We're glad you're here, Mike, I promise.
So I make.
I'm sorry, hey, I picked up, I picked up my packet a week early, I'm sorry. So. We can retract the amended.
Okay, let's start all over, yes, we'll start all over, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Roll call please.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Miss, Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
All right, well, moving on, approval of a resolution for the fire department to enter automatic mutual aid agreements, Chief Crew.
What questions do we have on the automatic aid agreements?
Uh, let me read this for everyone, um, City of Tawny Town, Washington County, Arkansas, a resolution approving an automatic mutual aid agreement between the city of Fayetteville Fire Department and the city of Tawny Town Fire Department.
Are we going to have to read each one of these because they're multiple, if we vote on them individually?
Okay.
I think we have to vote on them individually, yes.
I have a question that will encompass all of them, I believe.
Yes, sir.
What are the benefits for us and what are the benefits for them to be in a mutual aid agreement?
So they're all stated what they're going to provide and what we're going to provide. NFPA 1710, which kind of governs what we do at the fire department, says that you have to have 15, minimum of 15 firefighters on a structured fire. Um, obviously, we don't have that here, so by establishing automatic aid agreements, when we get a structured fire, they're automatically dispatched. In return, if they get a structured fire or whatever they've designated in these contracts, we provide that for exchange. Springdale, for example, they're going to provide two apparatus plus a battalion chief, so they're going to send on average seven people. Um, our response to them is three people and one fire engine. Um, Fayetteville, I think they requested a tanker or a brush truck for areas where they don't have water supply or where they have a grass fire. In return, they're going to provide two apparatus and eight people and a battalion chief vehicle, two apparatus and eight people. Um, Johnson, I believe theirs is the same as ours, it's, um, we're both going to provide a fire engine and three personnel, they're going to provide a fire engine, three personnel. Cave Springs, the same. Um, the volunteer departments, like the Tawny Town Area Fire Department and Wheeler Fire Department, they are providing tanker support for areas where we don't have water supplies such as Reed Valley, um, Apple Blossom and Steel Road, they provide tankers and then in return, we provide a fire engine and personnel if they could get a structured fire. So the likelihood of two jurisdictions having a structured fire at the same time are not likely, not saying it's impossible. So for the most, most part, we utilize their personnel whenever we have a fire, they utilize ours when they have a fire.
Good, thank you, very detailed answer, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I make a motion to approve the Springdale, um, resolution in front of us.
But this is State, City of Fayetteville.
Oh, no.
Mine's Springdale. First one was Springdale, excuse me.
Mike, but he doesn't want to do that one, he wants the other one, he's just jumping.
Sorry, I was, I read the wrong one.
You, you did well.
I think he said Springdale, Fayetteville.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right, moving on. I read the wrong one. A resolution approving an automatic mutual aid agreement between the city of Cave Springs Fire Department and the city of Tawny Town Fire Department.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. A resolution approving an automatic mutual aid agreement between the city of Johnson Fire Department and the city of Tawny Town Fire Department.
Do we need to read each one of these or is that, is that plenty? Plenty, right, okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
A resolution approving automatic mutual aid agreement between Tawny Town Area Fire Department and the city of Tawny Town Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Our resol- A resolution approving an automatic mutual aid agreement between the city of Fayetteville Fire Department and the city of Tawny Town Fire Department.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second. I don't see that in my packet, but I do.
Didn't either.
Well, do we have a first?
It's the last one.
Oh, it's okay.
Wheeler is the next one.
Could be.
It's all right.
It's okay.
We already make a motion.
So the, the city of Fayetteville one was added, it was, um, it was not in the original packet that was, um, added for you guys' review because we were unable to get it completed in time for the previous Cal meeting.
All right, now we've done.
It's Fayetteville.
I withdraw my motion. I would like to review the exhibit real quick.
Well, I will make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Who seconded?
I did.
Danny. Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim? Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Hey, moving on, a resolution approving an automatic mutual aid agreement between the Wheeler Fire Department and the city of Tawny Town Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Did we get through all of them?
I believe so.
Okay. Just checking.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, um, uh, we'll go on to H, an approval of a rel- of a resolution of intent regarding capital improvements, Mr. Latham.
This was actually left off of, uh, the council meeting in January, we discussed this at the Cal. What it's basically doing is, is, uh, you know, we're going to be, uh, hopefully getting these bonds sold sometime here before May, and what this does gives an opportunity, um, to be able to spend some of the money 60 days before the bond closing, um, and get reimbursed for it. So anything that, I know James has got some easements he needs to get, um, on the water tower project. We've got some expenditures that'll be coming up here on the Fletcher Road project, especially with engineering, so we'll be able to re- pay ourselves back, so what this, that's what this is.
So we saw this.
But questions?
Yeah, we saw this previously, you say?
Yes, it was left off.
It was left off, it was in January.
Okay.
Remember, Danny?
I remember talking about that vaguely. So I guess we need a motion to approve on this resolution?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, comments? We will start with Mr. Wishkoyak.
Before I make any comments, can I circle back to the financials, just one question, because there was a lot of discussion in the Cal meeting about Mr. Lloyd, and there were some payments made to Mr. Lloyd in January. Are these continuing to be made?
No.
So there are no more arrangements with Mr. Lloyd?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Oh, um, and I did have a lot of other things that I was going to talk about with, uh, the FOIA, uh, but I, I, because I was kind of wondering why it was on there, uh, and to, just to show the number that were.
We had, uh, we had someone request that on there.
Okay, um, because, I mean. because, I mean, okay.
We had a council member request it, we put it that way.
Well, yeah, that's fine, I mean, I think it's great, I, I, I don't care if we have it every, every week, I just didn't, I don't know.
That's what, that's what was requested.
Yeah, that's fine, that'll be great, um, um. Moving on to my comments, uh, sorry I wasn't here last time, um, I hope that I can continue to be here, um, in person every time, that's obvious, obviously my choice or my prerogative would be here in person every time. Um, obviously, there was an extenuating circumstance last time. Um, still, uh, issues that we have to deal with there. Uh, there are no permanent decisions made as of right now, but my mom is back home, um, so that's good. Um, you know, should there come a time where, obviously, I've got to devote more time to that, I, I won't, um, you know, I, I'll leave it up to you guys as to what I should do as far as my position here. Um, but obviously, that, that's way more important than, than this. So, my intent is to, uh, do this for as long as I'm able to do it. Um, and as long as I can devote the time that I need to, to it as well. Um, I, I really, uh, it was good to hear from, uh, the candidates who, uh, for the museum board, uh, I like the fact that they, that, uh, there are people that are still connected to the original settlers who, uh, want to keep the traditions alive here, that's what makes Tontitown unique. Um, I, I hope that we can continue to do that, um, with people who wanted to devote their time, volunteer their time. And sometimes this feels like a volunteer position too, as much time as we have to put into it, but it, I know it's not. Uh, I, I'm, I'm grateful to, um, all the people who are willing to serve, it's, it's, it's good that we do have people come here that want to be a part of, because I think we're doing a lot of good things in the city, I really do. Um, so, uh, I think I'll leave it at that for now, thank you.
Mr. Wishkoyak, I do want to say that even though, you know, I know that sometimes you have travel out of town and I know you're out of town, uh, sometimes, you always make a great effort to either zoom in and make sure that you're here, and I do appreciate that. So that is a- absolutely a, a positive, okay? Um, Mr. Bords?
Thank you. Um, you know, I want to start by, um, by thanking Scott Artemani in particular. Uh, the, I can't believe that a, a week ago right now, it was, what, below zero, something crazy? And, uh, Barrington in particular was just a mess for days and days and days and days, and yet, they were out there early and often scraping it, insulting it and uh, getting that dealt with, I think it's, um, uh, when you look at something like 412, 412 was great, uh, kept hearing from people that. And I know that Barrington had, had nothing to do with their, um, lack of effort, because they were working really, really hard, but I really appreciate our streets department. Uh, thank you, Scott, for, uh, leading that and for all that went into that, that was really hard, and I know, uh, as difficult as, as it is, uh, to, to work in any emergency, uh, I know those hours were long and we really appreciate it, so thank you, uh, both my family and I know all of us on council as well. I wanted to thank Mr. Lovett for your comments and thank you for reminding us, uh, about the Thursday event. Uh, it's going to be right across the street at St. Joe's, uh, please do attend. We have some really major issues and ADEQ isn't going to do anything unless they hear from you. Uh, in fact, they may not do anything even if they hear from you, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. Uh, I want to congratulate, uh, our new board members, Mr. Morgan, uh, Mr. Maestry, Mr. Toldo, Ms. Barry. Uh, thank you so much, uh, for your willingness to serve, and we certainly are thankful to have you there. For Mr. Bords, uh, Mrs. Black, thank you so much for the years that you've put into being on the Planning Commission, we know that's difficult. And it takes a lot to learn what you do, and we appreciate that you're, you're willing to have done it and you're willing to continue doing it. So, uh, I'm really excited about two more years of y'all in that, uh, position, Mr. Trout, I know he, he left, uh, but certainly appreciate his willingness, and also, Mr. Reynolds, uh, wanted to thank you for, for your, um, uh, willingness to be a, a part of that as well. Um, that is all, I'll see you all Thursday night, right across the street at 6 o'clock.
Mr. Artemani.
Just kind of reiterate, uh, I know, I saw that our city employees out early and late, as you say, Sunday. I saw the, the, the truck finishing up on some of the spots, and I said, my goodness, you know, but, uh, kudos to them, I'm sure it was, if, if it wasn't, if it was just the street department, they were, they provided yeoman effort, and if it's the water department, everybody else kicked in, which I assume they probably did, I appreciate that. And, uh, thank you, guys, congratulations, I guess, or condolences, whichever, you know, you prefer, but appreciate you, guys. As you say, you know, you put in a lot of time and effort, so I appreciate that, and guys, sure have changed from last week and I like it.
Hmm? Stay this way.
Yeah.
No, it is not, but, no, thank you, that's all I've got.
Ms. Avara, Mrs. Avara?
Just going to echo everything that, uh, Larry just said. Congratulations to our continued commissioners and then, um, to our street department as well. I was, I, I get stir crazy at home, so I was out in the worst of it, driving around, and I had no problems, so great job on the, the streets, so that's all I have.
Right, Mrs. Piazza?
I, again, I want to say thank you to the street department, I tried to wave at Scott as he was going down my road each time. Uh, you know, to let him know I was appreciating them, but, uh, the roads were, they did a great job, I mean, it was cold, it was cold, I, I sent up some extra prayers for them because they were busting in some of the coldest temperatures I've ever seen in my lifetime here in Arkansas, so I'm very, very grateful for them, thank you to our police and fire. Um, I have a friend on Springdale Depart- Fire Department and all the way around, all of our service people in the community here, other towns. It was not easy, there was lots of accidents, there was even the, the trailer that caught, the diesels that caught them firing on the bypass, I mean, not only did we have the cold weather, we had some really bad accidents, we were blessed that it wasn't so bad here in Tontitown, but all of the service people in North West Arkansas, they were put to the test during this weather, um, being out in those cold temperatures, that's dangerous.
Yeah.
Um, so thank you, Stan, every month and for all your service. Congratulations to our new museum board members, um, to Brittany, Billy, Chris and Kevin, they put in some amazing applications. Um, that's a once a month meeting and we meet for about three hours. And then we have two huge events that we do in the fall and the spring, and we have two small events, and it's all volunteered, they give all those hours. I think I told it up, we do close to over 100 hours a year, just volunteering our time, so this is a commi- and it's a three-year commitment that they've signed up for. So I just, I don't know if everybody realizes the commitment that they've just been appointed to, but it's not just a simple this or that, I mean, it's a undertaking to help us move in and we've got, um, upcoming expansions and a huge education program being rolled out. And there's just some really big things coming and they're really, really going to help us with the experience they have, and I usually try to leave my museum president board hat off, but I just wanted, since we had four come on tonight, I wanted to explain just the time that they're fixing to dive into. Um, and then Ashlyn, the junior board members, it's a year commitment, they're not voting members, but they come to every meeting and they're at every event. Um, and we have two new junior board members that might be coming up in the near future, so we try to keep three of those going. And it's going to help with the kids that have to have service hours to graduate now, so that should open the door for a few more opportunities to gab, grab those junior board members and to get those kids excited about the history here in town and to keep them going. Um, I want to say congratulations to Kevin and Candy. Um, you guys have done a great job and we're excited to see you guys continue that, thank you, Chris Trout for applying. Um, we appreciate it, and also to Todd, and, um, we just are pretty excited to see where we're going to go for the future. Um, and then I encourage everyone to come out Thursday night to the meeting and help get your voice be heard. So, thank you.
Mr. Montez?
Boy, oh boy, I want to echo everything Misty said and everybody else here. Um, congratulations to the museum board members that were appointed tonight, the planning commission members, uh, and thank you to the citizens that came and spoke. Um, I'm excited to hear more about that, uh, growth management plan that, uh, Mr. Latham had presented tonight. Uh, and eager to hear about the emergency plan that, uh, is in the finalization, finalization, uh, process with the, uh, chief, uh, Jensen, Chief Krueg. Um, and then, you know, uh, glad to hear that, uh, Mr. Wishkoyak, your mother's doing great. Uh, I think I also want to echo, um, what the mayor had said, you know, you do, you do a great job of, you know, whether you're off for work or personal matters, you're still involved, and I, I don't think anybody up here thinks you're, um, that steering away from your due diligence that you've, you've committed to the city, so, uh, just keep on, keep your head up and keep moving forward. Uh, I, I appreciate you, uh, as, along with everybody else here on council. Um, so the Greg Lloyd matter, you know, that keeps coming up. Um, you know, from what I understand, um, who is our, I, you know, I, I, our IT company is, I would assume if he, if Greg Lloyd has no more payments coming to him, um, we're still with telecom. Uh, at least from a contract standpoint, that's who it's supposed to be. Um, and from what I understand, the Greg Lloyd payments were to buy software or hardware for the city to operate. Um, so I think, you know, from what you've said to Nightmare, that that's, we, we're paid off on that equipment and we no longer or, you know, have any payments going out to Greg Lloyd, so hopefully that'll go to, that, that'll go to rest, um, from here on out, so if there's any confusion there on my end, I, I, I ask if you have any comments to add to that. Um, and that's pretty much it.
All right, well, mayor comment time. I want to thank the Scott and the whole road crew, they did an awesome job, I want to thank our fire department, you guys, I appreciate you. These and our police department, all these guys are out in the weather all the time, doesn't matter, rain, shine, snow, sleet. And I appreciate everything that they do for our city. And they get out there and they risk their lives on our streets, our roads, our sometimes, um, unruly passersby's. But, um, they do an awesome job and they protect us, and I appreciate that. So thank you guys very much, and I, I appreciate you guys for acknowledging them, so, um, let's adjourn, all in favor?